So we're gonna have three speakers. Each is gonna speak for about ten or fifteen minutes. Then we'll have a question and answer period, and then announcements before we wrap up and offer some refreshments and fellowship. Our first speaker tonight is Triest Lockwood. She is the vice chair of the Public Utility and Services Commission. Triest is also president and founder of Lockwood Strategies, a boutique clean energy policy consulting firm based in Richmond. She works with environmental nonprofit organizations, clean, that sounds good, clean energy companies and others to navigate government processes and help clients achieve their climate and energy goals. She received a BA and a BS from Penn State University and JD from Catholic University of America Columbus School of Law. She has served in Governor Ralph Northam's administration in different roles. Remember their good old days, Northam? Including she was senior policy advisor to the Department of Environmental Quality and chief energy advisor to Governor Northam. She's also graduated University of Virginia Sorensen Institute Political Leadership Program and Leadership Metro Richmond. Let's have a warm round of applause, Triest Lockwood.
Thank you for having me and thanks everyone for being here. I see a lot of familiar faces. Hi, Mary Stewart. My name's Triest. I live in Richmond. I have served with governor's administration and now I work with some of you nonprofits, businesses on clean energy goals in Virginia. So very specific area focused, which I love. And this is actually serving on this commission. Richmond's Public Utilities and Services Commission is really my most in-depth local government experience. So it's been really interesting to see and to learn lessons, pull lessons from the state, see how it works at a local level and kind of draw those examples and lessons together so that we can really start to see some progress on the local level. So the Public Utilities and Services Commission, who here has heard of it before? Okay, great. Well, this is a good track. It is fairly new. So it was established, let me go to the next slide. It was established in 2023. Councilman Andreas Addison was very helpful in getting it off the grounds. And the purpose is to advise the city council and mayor on the operations and financial integrity of the city's utilities and services. So I'm gonna kind of go over the structure, what it does, the composition, the goals. And with this, though, with this lens of kind of the structure and how it's set up and what we can accomplish, I think it's also interesting to think about what else, you know, this was just someone's good idea, right? And now the council is up and running. And I think these things take time to really see things all the way through. But it's just a good reminder that we can have concepts and bring them to local or state government. And sometimes they're super effective and they're very popular. And sometimes they challenge our governments. And I think this is a good example of one that just, you know, came from, it wasn't just Councilman Andreas Addison. It was a bunch of people who were like, there's a need for this, so let's make this happen. And then here we are, right? City council passed the ordinance. And now we, those who serve on it, have the responsibility of really making it effective. Because I am a true believer that some of these workgroups and commissions which some of you have served on, and I've definitely served on others, they really are what you make it. Like you can, it can be just another workgroup or it can be something where you have a concrete transition of utility in the clean energy economy, progress afterwards, right? So that's how I'm looking at this. Like what can we do? How can we use this process and the thoughtfulness that went into setting this up to actually see results? Okay, let's go over the functions. So the utilities that are covered under this jurisdiction of our commission are natural gas, drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste. And there are several committees set up in the ordinance for each of those categories. Another reminder that the language that we put into ordinances and bills really matters. Because that is what now there are people meeting on these subject areas and thinking through next steps to support the city with each category. This is also gonna challenge because for a while we had everyone appointed and had quorum. And so some of the subcommittees are more active than others, and that's okay. But just a reminder that the words matter. And so that's what we seek to do, is have subcommittees for each area. And then the ordinance also includes certain sustainability measures and facilitating transition of the gas utility. And so this is consistent with the city's climate emergency declaration, which I'm sure you all know about, from several years ago, which is another good example. Like that has really helped lead the charge for our commission and others, right? Getting that resolution while more visionary, guiding is still a step that has created a lot more, I would say, good efforts and good people trying to see some of our climate and clean energy goals through. And then our other goal is to increase public engagement around Richmond's utilities and services. I think this can always be improved. And so we are constantly thinking about how to encourage more people to join our public meetings, how to get more public comments, how to incorporate those into our report, thank you. And so just another piece of this process, right? And then I can... Yes. And then here's the actual ordinances. So the one, the first one, from 2021, declaring climate and ecological emergency, which is helpful for us to reference too, right? So reaching that zero by 2050, that actually aligns with our, well, kind of aligns with our state law on clean energy. That's a really foundational piece of the state policy puzzle, which is to decarbonize by 2050, 2045 or 2050, depending on which utility jurisdiction. So I was happy to see the city kind of thinking through how the city can act on this. So then after that, our commission was created. So the commission is advisory, which is a good reminder to all of us that it is not binding. We do not have binding authority. We can advise and then hopefully that is, you know, hopefully the advisement is taken at some point. And we can continue to think through, in my opinion, how the commission, what resources the commission might need to be able to provide more support to the city, which can take binding actions. Right now, the membership has thirteen voting members, eight appointed by city council, five by the mayor, I was a mayoral appointee. There was one from each city council district, and it would come bill, who also serves on the commission here too. I am in the first district and so sort of thinking through, served there, thinking about the first, and a really cool city though. And then, yeah, city residents. And then we serve for three years with staggered transitions. So if you're interested in serving at some point, there will be a consistent but steady rolling off with folks. And then we will get new folks on. And actually, with the new mayor, there will be new appointments coming up because some of us have been on for a while. The duties include operations, financial integrity, performance of these utilities, research advisement on the transition of the gas utility, which I'm especially interested in. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. Making recommendations on rates, infrastructure, public engagement, which again relates to transparency and utility services. So with that, we meet pretty regularly. I'm a member of the Natural Gas Operations Subcommittee. And, yeah, as you see, June 2024. We're still fairly new, but I think we've done a lot in the research side of it, I would say, through our annual reports. So each year, we have a report where we'll put out some of the commission members' work on subject areas. And we had one last October, and then we have one coming out this October, which then the city council and the mayor's administration can act on. They could ask us for more information. They can really think through how to use this report. And that's kind of the relationship we're working on now. And also, as you mentioned, on the commission, we have the utility heads and we have the Sustainability Office and utilities from regional, like from Pembroke and others, joining us for the commission meetings. So we really have a lot of good folks in the room thinking through these issues. And it is, you know, it's a dynamic that I think can lead to some results. Or, you know, but it depends on a number of other points that the city can make, right? Like the city, for example, is there more funding for some of the offices we've had to fund? Is there funding for the commission? These components will always be there and a little challenging. But our job is to make recommendations on what we need to have a more robust commission. So challenges, I would say, one is funding. So some commissions, as we were talking about before this meeting started, have a dedicated source of revenue to staff to probably provide financial support for reports, things like that. We do not have that. We have just a little bit of funding initially to help with staff. And as we know, funding is really important. So I think like one of our recommendations, for example, could be for more city funding. We'd have to really think through what the proposal was for that to get it. But that could help us with, for example, procuring some reports that I will get to. So that's a challenge. And then the solid waste subcommittee, I mentioned, there's a lot, a lot of folks on the commission and a lot of subcommittees. So we could use more engagement there. And then coordination around multiple complex utility issues and collaboration just overall have been challenges, as you mentioned. That being said, we did have a 2024 report that went over some areas of importance to support the city. However, this was given to the last mayor's administration. So in some ways, it feels like you kind of have to rewrite the report, which we are already doing this year, to make sure it means this administration's goals and staff finds it helpful and things like that. So last year, we found that there's high capital needs for the city. Obviously, CSO projects, lead pipe replacement, gas modernization. This was kind of the start of our deep dive into this and then the importance of climate planning, climate-related transition planning. So for example, there's the resolution, there's the ordinance. But is anyone at the utility, each utility or the gas utility, thinking about climate planning? Have the answers to that, which we don't need to. You can imagine that this is still kind of a newer concept. And so the need for long-term energy planning, I would say, has been brought up. And I would say there's probably a lot of agreement around that. And then again, public awareness and engagement. Also, we had little reports from each of our subcommittees. So, I mean, each one really dove into its findings for the city. So looking at water rates, infrastructure investment, monitoring lead service and line replacement, stormwater. We looked at the drainage system performance, flood mitigation. As you know, being on the James, we have certain challenges there. And then aligning what we're doing with the state and federal funding and opportunities there too, which actually kind of could be woven through almost all of our subcommittees. Wastewater, reviewing CSO and making sure there is compliance with state and federal, and then capital improvement needs. So again, a lot of it comes back to financial planning. And then the natural gas subcommittee. So studying pipeline conditions, leak rates. And I know a lot of you have been involved in this sort of work and modernization projects, looking at the rate structure, cost equity, and then researching health and environment impacts of gas in buildings, exploring strategies for long-term transitioning away from gas in line with emergency ordinance. And that concept has been one of our challenging ones, as you might imagine, because we've been so reliant on our utility and we appreciate their service and we continue to appreciate it. But how can we think about the clean energy transition while working with our utilities to really take some steps forward? And I have thoughts on that, which I'll get to soon. But overall, we provide oversight and structure. We need full membership, we need engagement for success. So if you are interested in joining a public meeting and possibly providing comments or weighing in on our reports, that is very much help, that is help that is very much needed and appreciated. And then just making sure that we are aligning with the cities and the states' sustainable sustainability and climate goals. And then thinking through the best ways to do that, right, with the cities. So what's next is a report that we're currently working on. And so this report is in draft form, but we are discussing it in our very public meetings. In the gas section of the report, one of the things we're talking about is how our chair, Kevin, found that utility rate increases largely out, like right now in the city, our rates are increasing, which is, you know, to be expected if we look at everything. But they are outperforming inflation. And some research indicates that it's largely because customers are choosing electric over gas and there's less of a need for new gas infrastructure. So this is pulled, this is from our chair's research, looking at different data. So how can we help the city by aggregating this data? Why is there less gas use? You know, we don't necessarily have the answer to that, but we can look at the weather patterns, we can look at the population patterns, the new builds, and kind of assimilate concepts on why this could be happening. But that could also help us plan for the future to prevent stranded assets, higher costs. And, you know, we want to move, if we want to move in the clean energy direction, how can we take this data and make sure that we're still supporting people now and in the future in a way that's affordable, to support an affordable climate through transition, but also looking at other opportunities? And I think both are very possible. You just need to look at both opportunities, not just one or the other. The other recommendations that we're discussing to address rate increases and energy affordability are an energy efficiency program. So for example, a state or a city could have a fund that you apply to and you get your house weatherized or you get new, you know, new H-back or heat pump. And obviously, this would take some time to figure out. But there certainly are funds like this that exist. And that is something I think that would make sense to consider. Also, new gas customers could, like right now, what happens is the city pays for the gas connection costs. And there could be a review of that to see if that still makes sense or certain classes of customers should pay for that cost and certain should not. And I think our report will dig into that a little bit more. And then looking at depreciation timelines for new gas and enabling the utility suppliers to lease cost options. So before we upgrade new pipelines, which I think the recent numbers were over $150 million for the next 10, 20 years to upgrade the infrastructure, are we doing a full analysis of other options, right? Of a PPA with a local solar company? Are we doing other modeling, really? That's not just our work at the commission, but other modeling of the electricity, energy, gas needs of the city and the projections? So I think that the commission may recommend, we have to do the final report, which will be public, and the draft reports are basically public and come to the meetings as well. The commission may recommend procuring analysis to consider alternative options. The gas utility, what this means is the city could say, "Look, we are interested in a transition with this utility or this utility. Why don't we put out an RFP, have a bunch of international engineers come and look at the city of Richmond, look at what we can offer, look at our energy sources, and evaluate what options are feasible to support energy affordability, to support our climate goals, to support people right now, but no one's trying to make any abrupt decisions, right? Like let's spend some time and resources to look into this." So I think we may recommend a report, which is something we could fund if we have funding probably. And then another possible report on non-pipeline alternatives to encourage electrification in buildings and the thermal network. So those are some potential options. And we will, the report, I think, is due the last day in October. So we'll be able to take more concepts and really flush these out with our subcommittees and full committees before then. That's all I have, just as I'll conclude with just a reminder that these workgroups, in my opinion, are what you make them. So if you're on them, if you want to join them, please, please do so and think about how to really have an impact on these issues. And this is just one way to do that. So thank you for your time.
I think what we'll do is take questions for all three speakers after all three have spoken.
All right, thank you.
Yes, extremely important work that the Public Utility Services Commission is doing. The Kevin that Triest mentioned is Kevin Chalfarini, who is finishing his time on our EXCOM and is the chair of that commission as well. So, and the energy efficiency program, as you mentioned, we are working with two city councilors right now to bring that as an ordinance for city council in the near future. Our next speaker will be Steve Marzolf, who is the chair of the Clean City Commission. And Steve, after a 30-year career in state local government, he has retired to spend more time doing everything, everything good, more time volunteering in the community, which he does in many, many ways. He is currently the treasurer and project manager for the tree planting and park design projects for Swansboro West Civic Association. He's vice president of the Richmond Tree Stewards and a fellow member of Falls of the James Group. Let's give a warm round of applause to Steve.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the invitation to come to speak. I took over as chair of the Clean City Commission in May or June because frankly, nobody else wanted to do it. And I did have some time, so I thought, well, why not? And I've spent since then trying to figure out what it is we want to be when we grow up. So a little bit about what the Clean City Commission is. We were originally created in 1993, and I've had two major rewrites, the most recent being in February of 2024. We're supposed to have 17 members. We currently have 12, so we do have five vacancies. Fifteen are to be appointed by the council, one from each council district, five at large. Yes, if you do the math, that's only 14. There's a math error in the ordinance. Two from the mayor and the director of DPW are designated. So we, as I said, we currently have five vacancies of the second district, the ninth district, and then three at-large positions are currently vacant. So if you know anybody who's interested in Clean City Commission-type work, which we'll talk about, please, please let me know. And we meet monthly, both in person and virtually back and forth. This month coming up is an in-person, which I'll mention later. This is our current membership. As I mentioned, the second district and the ninth district are vacant. We do have two mayoral appointments that are brand-new to the commission. So we're really excited about getting a full membership as, you know, I mentioned about the Public Utility Commission. It really is something that you can't do your work if you don't have enough people to do it. What are our duties? Really boils down to, we're to advise council on priorities that relates to litter cleanup, recycling, solid waste management. We work closely with CBWMA, the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority, and their contractor, TFC. We also work closely with DPW to talk about the transfer stations, the recycling programs, and that sort of thing. We are also the local affiliate for Keep Virginia Beautiful, which is the state affiliate for Keep America Beautiful. You can look at that later, but basically what it says is, what we do is we support community activities that want to do cleanups and litter control and recycling programs. So what I really want to talk to you about is what our priorities are coming up in 2026 because I think there might be some opportunities to partner with the Sierra Club. Because that's also, as a Sierra Club member, I know what is Sierra Club does and I think there is some alignment in areas. One of our biggest issues right now facing the city is illegal dumping, most notably with tires. We used to, if you ever been out to the East End Transfer Station, there's a tractor trailer where they put the tires for recycling. We used to fill about one a month or every other month. We're filling them one a week right now. Because people are, what's happening is these little tire shops. Somebody comes in and says, "I'll take those tires off your hand for five bucks, 10 bucks a tire." The tire dealer says, "No problem." Gives the money, loads up their truck, and they drive off. They just find a dark alley, dump the tires, and they pocket the entire amount. What they're supposed to do is take them down to a recycling center, like the one in Charles City County or someplace like that, where they're properly recycled. In Swansboro West, which I know well, because on Swansboro West Civic Association Board, we had 15 tire dumps in our alleys that we had to get picked up by DPW. It took several churches to manage to get all of them. The United Nations Church on Route 1 had 249 tires dumped one Saturday night. They show up for service the next morning, and they couldn't even get in the parking lot because of it. That was a big enough incident to get a task force formed, but it's a temporary task force of the police department, DPW, and others. We want to see something more permanent done. We have to talk about this. It's not just tires, though, too. We've seen TVs. If you know anything about recycling electronics, TVs don't recycle for free. They're about $25 a piece. So if we do our litter cleanup and we find a 40-inch LCD TV and I want to recycle it, it costs the Civic Association $40 to recycle it. We've got to come up with a better solution as a city for those types of things. We are looking at monitoring problem areas with cameras. But then there's the whole issue of, well, how do you subscribe to a camera service? You heard about the little P-card debacle that Richmond had with purchasing cards, which makes it really difficult to sign up for subscription services like that. We also want to expand recycling in Richmond Public Schools. Believe it or not, if you don't have any kids in the public school, you may not know, they don't recycle. We did find a few schools that said, "Yeah, we do." But we found out the teachers were just taking it home and throwing it in their home recycle bin. We should do better than that. This is the perfect opportunity to teach the kids the proper way to recycle. They're in school, they'll learn. It would be great. So we need to do that. But that gets to the question, who's going to pay for it? I don't know if you may have read, the school board has a little bit of budget troubles as well, trying to maintain all the schools. We also need a solution for the disposal of brush and yard waste. Most often, it gets taken to the East End Transfer Station. If you've been out there, you'll now know, if you've been out there recently, you'll know that the piles are about 40 feet high, pretty much right up to the entrance. It is overwhelming. The reason is, DPW does not have a budget to do anything with the branches, trees, limbs, yard waste that gets brought there. And what they usually do is wait for a good budget year and they have some extra money, and then they take care of it. Well, that hasn't happened for several years. So there's, pile is really, really overwhelming. So there's some ideas. Biochar's been thrown out there, mulching's been thrown out there. But we need a permanent solution, believe it or not. The city of our size, we shouldn't be doing things like that based on leftover money that we're able to find. And then finally, we want to really look at expanding our waste reduction programs to decrease those, the landfill waste, doing more composting. We, I hope you all know, there are 20 locations around the city where you can take your food scraps and put them in. Recently, we just changed contractors. The contractor before could only handle light compost, they call it, like produce and things like that. They couldn't do bones and things like that. And the, you know, the cups that say they're compostable, we didn't used to be able to do those. The new company is able to do all of those. So, but we need to expand more than just the 20 locations. We're looking to maybe partner with the schools and the libraries to get more sites where we can have people drop off their food waste. And then small business recycling. Right now, if you're a business, your only option is to buy, rent a dumpster for recycling. And for some places, it's a small business, they can't fill the dumpster in a week. And that's, it's an unnecessary expense. So what do they do? They just throw it out. And when you're talking about a place like a grammar from the winery, who's the poster job for me on this, which does wine bottles all day long? They, you know, they just can't afford to do that. So they dump their store gum in the trash. And that's just, we, again, we can do better than that. Finally, multifamily residential does not currently have recycle. What we really need to do is put a line in the sand that says, "Any new multifamily residential gets built will have recycling on site." Right now, when we've talked to some locations about doing it, the biggest issue is they don't have any place to put it because they didn't design for it. They designed for a trash dumpster, nothing else. So those are really what we want to focus on and we want the council to focus on. And again, I think as we put pressure on the council and the mayor to look at these things that are hugely impactful on the environment, we hope that we can partner with the Sierra Club to also make that part of your legislative push to say, "These are important to the city, and these are important to the citizens." We also do community cleanups. This has been our focus for the last several years. We provide, we do have a dedicated funding source, so we get part of the money from the litter tax from DEQ. And it comes to the city, and the city steers it towards the Clean City Commission. And we'll do by-pickers, vests, gloves, bags, basically all the supplies you need. And we'll do by-pickers, best gloves, bags, basically all the supplies we need. We'll also help advertise it. We're on CF Engage, we're on Meetup, we have over eighteen hundred subscribers on Meetup. We also have social media accounts. We coordinate the trash pickup. So if the Sierra Club wants to do a cleanup and you're looking for a partner to bring the supplies, we also have a standard waiver people, for people to sign. We also have a training video and those sorts of things. We're happy to partner. And then we do some one-day cleanups, like on MLK Day of Service, or Mayor's Day of Service, we did a couple events, Joe came out to it. He seems to come out to all of our events, I don't know, always late, observant, he's always late. We also do help with the bulk pickup and advertising. I hope you all know the schedule for the bulk pickup. Every year, there's two dates, one usually in March and early in the year, and one later in the year, when the claw truck comes by to pick up anything that no one else will pick up. So we, we push that out, let people know when that's coming. We also do public awareness, we table at all the events that we can. We do give away right now reusable grocery bags of a hot ticket because of bag tax coming in January, didn't hear, there's a bag tax coming in January, five cents for a plastic bag. So if you don't have reusable bags, and I'm sure everybody in this room uses reusable bags, I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sure, but we want to make sure that people have access to them. As I mentioned, we coordinate with CBWMA on the recycling program. You know, it, and try to do education on proper placement of it and what goes in it. The aforementioned plastic bags do not go in it, and we want to make sure that what gets to the recycling facility can actually be recycled. We always like to throw in a slide just to remind people, I got to confess, as I, when I became Chair, or actually when I got on the Clean City Commission just about a year ago, I, I didn't know what was proper. I thought I knew what was proper to recycle and what wasn't, but I didn't. One of the big things for me was I always loved just number ones and number twos in the plastic that we recycle, but we also do number fives, which are like the clamshells or the yogurt containers and cartons and some of the other things like that. So it is, there are a wide variety of things that we can recycle. Three times a year, we hold a, we call it an e-cycle event, but we actually do more than just e-cycling. You know, in January, May, and September, we do electronics, we do paper shredding, up to five boxes, household hazardous waste, paints, pesticides, gasoline, if it's nasty, we'll take it. And then Christmas trees in January, it's a bring one for the chipper event. And right now, it's over at Robinhood Road, if you've been reading about the Diamond Project. I don't know where it's going to be, when it's going to be moved, but it will have to be moved once the Diamond Project takes over that, that property. We also try to let people know other recycling options. I mentioned East End, we can take four tires a visit. I will tell you that if you're a community group, and like at Swansboro West, one time we had twelve that we found during our community cleanup, we can make arrangements for civic associations and Sierra Club, I'm sure would follow, follow into that to maybe bypass that four limit and take twelve if you have them, as long as that, just give me a call, we can make that happen. The South Side Transfer Station, the one over on Hopkins Road, has general recycling. And then Parker Field Annex on Robinhood. I will mention the Stratford Hills location on Forest Hill, that Stratford Hills Shopping Center is moving. If it hasn't closed already, it's in the process of being closed, and it's going to move behind the firehouse just down the street, across from where the loads and things like, there's a gravel drive that goes back there. Electronic recycling, you can do with the first Saturday of every month at Secure Us, and then you can also do it at places like Staples, Best Buy, Goodwill, take electronic Plastic bags, I used to wonder what happened to them when you went to come to the grocery store. I actually have the answer. Especially food line, they give them to trucks and they become decked. So they actually do have a use, and it's actually a Winchester-based factory, so they don't even leave the state. Take them to Food Line, they go up to Winchester, you buy a deck. Sigley's Batteries, Clean Earth, which is the contractor for the city, has them, I think it's like eighty-five cents a pound you have to pay for them, but Staples also collects them, rechargeable batteries, most of the big box stores take them. And we found out Styrofoam, actually Publix takes Styrofoam, which surprised us, is. We're not sure yet. I have to find the reverse and answer that question. It could just end up, we were at the Folk Festival watching somebody empty the two trash cans. They had the trash can and they had the recycle bin, they pulled the recycling bin and put it in the trash can, they pulled out the bag and tied it through the truck, and I'm like, that was not what I expected. Other options, reusable items, you know, we, we try and let people know, you know, there's thrift shops, there's homeless shelters. If you're not aware of RBA scrap, they'll take anything crafty. I mean, we all do, we haul all that stuff to do a craft and then never did it. Take it to RBA scrap, a lot of teachers shop there, and prices are reasonable. And community gardeners love flower pots, or seeds, or potting soils, or tools. Another place with tools is the Tool Bank, even if they can't use them, they sell them every year, make some money. Shelters love, animal shelters specifically, we'll help, sheets, blankets, towels, old dog beds, cat trees, anything pet-related. And then never forget about FreeCycle and Facebook Marketplace. I think you'll, you'll be surprised what people would take. We were renovating our house, and we had all this old lap, plaster lap walls, away from these, I was putting it on Marketplace, I don't think they've ever going to want that stuff. Oh, absolutely, it was gone within three days. One was an artist who wanted it for supplies, and another, it was a group home that wanted to use it as a kindling for their big bonfire at their summer camp. I don't question why, as long as they get it out of my yard. We do have an adopt a spot program, if you want to adopt a spot to clean, we provide the Pickers Gloves Vest. If you do it for, I think it's six months, then you get to keep the equipment and, and you can give a sign for an adopt a spot. It's a great opportunity. I think Joe wants the Sierra Club to adopt them. Composting, I mentioned already, the twenty spots on the map home there around the city, and what you can and can't compost. And then we meet on the fourth, Wednesday of each month. Haven't figured out what we're going to do in November and December yet. November, it's Thanksgiving, and December, it's Christmas. I'm okay with that, I'm a bachelor, but I don't know if the rest of the commissioners want to be. And we have two cleanups that we regularly sponsor, and that's the third Saturday is Brooklyn Park, and then I have to give a shout out to Swansboro West's cleanup on the first Saturday of every month. As I mentioned, Joe often comes, and we appreciate the help, any help that we can get. I, I will also mention, the next Clean City Commission meeting is Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, and we're calling it an open house, and we're having it, we are having it at Gramophone Winery on Forest Hill Avenue, at the corner of Forest Hill and Westover Hills Boulevard. It's from six to seven-thirty. We'd love for you all to come out and meet the other commissioners, especially, I'm in the fifth district, but if you want to, you should meet your commissioner and tell them what you want to see going forward. So if you need anything, if you need support, have any ideas, we are always, always interested in hearing. Joe Sullivan, Sullivan Self-Surety, said he came to one of our commission meetings. Yeah, he was the first time we had a public person at one of our meetings that entire year, and it was Joe Grancolis. We appreciate you being, we'd love to see you there.
Thank you. You're better than me. All right. This is going to be a world record brief introduction for our next speaker, because Mr. Dave Evans bravely has stepped into the role of representing the Sustainability and Resilience Commission just today, when that commission's chair, Daniel Hart, became sick and couldn't make it tonight. So a member, a proud member of the Sustainability and Resilience Commission, let's welcome Dave Evans.
Daniel is sick or didn't have time to make a slideshow. I have to follow up with him on that. It's a pleasure to be here and standing for Daniel. I've been a member of the commission, which initially was, and for years, was called the Green City Commission. It was renamed about a year and a half ago, or something like that, Sustainability and Resilience Commission. So I've been on about three years, and we have had three chairs or presidents of the commission in that time. It's been nice to just see the handoff. And one thing I want to really say praises for with Daniel is his public engagement. Of course, when I joined, that would have been twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we were not meeting in person, everything was Zoom, right? It's not that long ago, but that's what we did. So we, we actually weren't together physically with the opportunity to really promote public involvement, you know? They could listen in as a Zoom, but you can't really participate. So for now, beginning in January of twenty twenty-four, continuing, we've had about seven or eight meetings since then in person. They're held on the third Monday of every other month, beginning in January, so January, March, et cetera, et cetera. The last one of the year is in November, and this year will be November eighteenth. So we meet at Main Brants Library, the Gelman Oratorium, which is through the main entrance and up a half inch flight of stairs to the right. I see some very familiar faces, because the point I wanted to make is, I think Daniel has really helped this commission become a place where people that care about environmental sustainability are learning, it's a good place to network and find out what the city is doing, but also find out what a lot of partners are doing. So anyway, without slides, there's just a few things that I want to hit on, and that hopefully will leave a little bit more time for, for questions. We are a commission of all volunteers, like the others and like Public Utilities, we do not have any dedicated funding to support our efforts. So we are, we are working as volunteers and doing what we can do with the time and expertise that we have. There's ten members, one is fully staffed, and I believe it is right now. So Daniel Hart is the chair, he's also a sustainability appointee. So it's a combination of at-large mayoral appointees and appointees that require particular expertise. So I want to give an example, energy efficiency and building standards, Bill Lickerston is our expert on that, he's in the background here, Bill. And you wouldn't think that our commission is highly diverse by looking at Bill and I, a couple of old white guys. It really is. We have a good balance of men and women, and we have a good balance of older people and younger people. So it's really been a very good experience for me. I just got appointed for a second three-year term. So the terms are three years, you can seek and be reappointed for a total of six years. But in the time I've been there, easily three-quarters of the membership has turned over in three years. So there really is a pretty regular opportunity. And if you're not familiar with the process, and you have any interest, really take a look at the city's website and city commissions, it spells it out very clearly. There's a simple application you can put in, but don't stop there, right? So if you know that commission is working primarily and championing the work of certain parts of city government, you know, maybe approach the head of that department, the deputy head, and learn a little bit about it. And obviously, especially if it's an at-large appointment or a technical specialty one, reach out to your local city council member. That's what I did, so I filled in the application, but then I reached out to Kristin and I, who was my city council member at the time. It's really been very valuable. So I'll just say a little bit about what we do. As a smaller commission and without dedicated funding to do more than what we can do as volunteers, we really are working to champion the city's efforts on sustainability. And I think many of you probably are quite familiar with the city's work, but probably some will benefit from this. So I'm going to just highlight what RBA Green Twenty Fifty really contains. That's the city's comprehensive plan for really dealing, doing our share to deal with climate crisis that we, our starehead square. It was developed, I think, over about a two to three-year period, and when I joined the commission in twenty twenty-two, it was on the verge of being approved. So it's been fully approved for two and a half, almost three years, and the city, I think, is doing, is making progress in every aspect of the plan. Of course, the ultimate result, carbon reductions and all that, that take a long time, but we, we have to take a lot of actions now to lay the groundwork. So the RBA Twenty Thirty, or Twenty Fifty Plan also has a Twenty Thirty Action Plan, because it has two targets. It calls for a forty-five percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by the year twenty thirty, and it calls for net zero by the year twenty fifty. One, one thing that I think is very impressive and encourage you to look at the city's website is the action tracker. So you can see all the actions that are there and where they stand. Are they being implemented? Have they been completed? You know, there's work underway and so on. So anyway, the plan as a whole is really hard to get your head around, and I say that as somebody who tried for the first year to really wrap my head around it. There's nearly a hundred and fifty actions in RBA Green Twenty Fifty. But if you then look at them in logical groupings and kind of hone in on what, you know, catches your fancy, then you can come to grips with it. You know, it's, it's worth investing that time. But the five pathways that the plan has really laid out in are buildings and energy, and a key thing there, just critically important, that's underway, is sustainable design standards. Bill can probably answer better, better than I questions, if you have some. But the city is nearly complete with drafting these, and they'll go out for public comment, I believe, and they're probably, you know, six months or a year away from adoption, but they will be mandatory for all publicly financed construction, buildings, but also roadways and things of that nature. So the city is really leading that effort by saying, everything that we directly fund is going to meet the highest standards for energy efficiency and sustainability. A wonderful opportunity to bring this to life, and also in partnership with the private sectors, with the Diamond District Buildout and the Office of Sustainability is the D-City Agency interacting with the development team on that. So for buildings and energy, there's, there's some great work being done. The Sustainable Design Standards, kind of the central, most important action that's been underway in the Diamond District Buildout, just a fantastic opportunity to see that put to life. Community is the second pathway that's identified. And throughout the plan, there is a strong commitment to environmental justice, to addressing harm that's, that's deeply ingrained in Richmond, from redlining and all sorts of other things, from where and how public housing and highways were constructed. And there are a lot of actions that are really geared to look for opportunities to hone in on the areas of the city that have suffered the greatest harm in the past in terms of where investments are made. An example of that is the Davidwood Resilience Brands. So it's not a huge program,